Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Mr. Smith, the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, we're in session. We're having a second meeting today on fats, oils, and grease, the proposed ordinance that we are proposing. And this is kind of at the request to give the restaurateurs an opportunity to maybe make some comments or not. And Larry, I ask you to kind of start with maybe if you can just be a, give us a rifle shot of what the ordinance looks like, what it's going to require people to do, and what's going to be different about it, please.
I think everyone has the ordinance. And what I've done is I went through and highlighted some stuff and added a couple of things that I didn't present last week. And the first one is our NPDS permitting. And under the Code of Federal Regulations, it's forty CFR, four oh three point five, section six, part three, it states it's illegal to allow viscous materials to enter a POTW or a public on treatment works. And the sanitary sewer system in Waterloo is part of that POTW. The fog program and the footing drain removal are both key elements in our SSOs, our sanitary oversplores that we're addressing with EPA at present. Again, this is introduction to the ordinance. And the regulations, fat, oil, grease, discharge by food service establishments, the purpose of the section shall be to aid in the prevention of sanitary sewer blockage, obstructions from contributions and accumulations of fat, oil, grease, fog into the POTW. And the reason I put that aid in a different color is because Bob Bamsy had asked me last week after if I really thought that once we have all the infiltration inflow out of the system, if I felt that it would be fair to say fifty percent of all the blockages we would have after we remove those would be from fat, oil, and greases. I'd done a little bit of checking, it's not a scientific study. I think fifty percent is a good number. That's the number Des Moines used. I looked at some other places and it seems like it'd be realistic. One of the things we want to do with the FSEs is to help them with best management practice or BMPs. And that's the schedule of activities, prohibitions of practices, maintenance of procedures, and other management practice to prevent or reduce pollution of waters of the state. There are probably two parts at what we're looking at in this program. One is that we will be doing, or someone in the city will now be doing grease trap or grease interceptors to find, depending on who you are and where you are, they're both really the same thing. One definition is a grease trap is a, basically an interceptor that only has two or less hookups to it, or four or more, I don't know what they've done with three, but four or more was considered an interceptor. Basically, they're saying that the interceptor is outside, the grease trap is inside, but they both serve the same function. Well, actually, it says it serves one or more fixtures is remotely located. That was another one I pulled up that said that's how they define grease interceptors. So there's multiple ways. You can call it a grease trap, grease interceptor, however you feel like doing it. This is another grease, is a device designed to retain grease from one or two, a maximum of four, for the purpose of article this grease trap is typically a small device located within a building. I looked at about five grease trap manufacturers today and trying to get this put together, and no one of, one of them had a definite definition of what a grease trap is or a This is one of the things I thought that we should maybe discuss a little bit, and the existing facilities of an FSE shall be deemed compliant unless superintendent or the city building official or designated determines that the existing grease trap or grease interceptor isn't capable of adequately retaining fog. Some of the questions were brought up was whether everyone was going to have to change their grease trap out or their grease interceptor or whatever, because under the present building codes, there are, and I'm gonna let Craig elaborate on that a little bit, about size and location and everything else rather than me doing it, because that is more of a building maintenance function than it is the inspection of it. I must not have found out a lot. One of the things that we're wanting to do is to ensure proper operation of maintenance and cleaning of the grease trap or interceptor. That will be the one function of the inspector who actually inspects the grease traps, sees they're open, and ensures they're being cleaned properly. Sorry, I'm having trouble reading this. Donor operator of an FSE shall cause the grease interceptor to be cleaned as hereafter required when the fog and solids reach twenty-five percent of the design of the liquid level of the grease interceptor or sooner if necessary. This will be part of the program that we will put together, that there will be multiple inspections made initially to determine whether or not you reach twenty-five percent. One place I was looking at today, they were actually cleaning their grease trap every day and having it cleaned by a professional grease trap cleaner. You may find that some of these don't need to be cleaned any more than once a month, definitely once a year on all of them, but it's going to, depending on the load that you're putting on the grease trap, you may not put twenty-five percent in there in six months, or you may put twenty-five percent in there in thirty days or less. So that's the program we have to establish as to how they're cleaned. Any person who cleans a grease trap, intercept, or grease interceptor shall have received the appropriate training through the Waste Management Services Department. What we're wanting to do is really license our haulers so that we have control of what you're bringing in and where it's coming from. I've looked at several companies that make grease traps, I've looked at several companies who build vacuum machines who, that clean grease traps. A lot of them have programs already established on how to do it. And so that will be something that we will use to develop our program as to who and where and how and why they clean the grease trap. One of the things we have is no use, not use an automatic grease removal system to clean a grease interceptor without prior written approval of superintendent. Our past experience has been that chemical additives into these grease traps to keep them cleaned out has caused our concrete lines deteriorate. They normally eat the bottom out of the lines. I assume that it's the lye content or something there that's affecting the composition of the concrete. So we are wanting to do away with that.
Is that allowed right now?
Yes. We have very few people using it right now, because the ones that were using it heavily, we've already spoke to several years ago, showed them what it was doing and why we didn't want to continue to allow it.
Okay, thank you.
Required records, the owner operator of an FSE which required to pass wastewater through a grease interceptor trap shall maintain a written record of grease interceptor trap maintenance. Not only will the owner operator be required to maintain this record, the city of Waterloo will also be maintaining these records for our inspections from ID and our EPA. So the record keeping is very important, and we want to keep good control of that. The log shall at all times be kept and maintained on a day-to-day basis so as to show a record of waste and wastewater removal, waste and wastewater disposal, and prove additive displacement. There are provisions in the ordinance that we can allow additives to be added, chemicals to be added. We're going to look at that really, really close. If you're on a, a plastic line, say, and you're adding it, we may allow it. If you're on concrete, we won't allow it because we know the deterioration that goes on in those concrete lines. So the provision is there, if people are doing it, we will look at the location. There are several factors we'll have to look at to ensure that we will approve that. Inspection of grease interceptors and related sewers and equipment, that's going to be part of our inspection program. Naturally, our sewer maintenance department is already inspecting the lines. We will now go in and inspect the interceptors and any equipment associated with it, which there, I was unaware of, but there are screens they put in front of grease interceptors or traps to trap the food particles. There are air release valves that they put in, all types of things. Maybe Craig knows more about those than I do. Inspection fees, inspection fees is something we developed, but we want to look at again and reassess what we are actually charging, what we're doing, and is it appropriate. Notice of violation of penalties and corrective actions, that's something that's in there, I think it's more of a boilerplate issue where it explains what can happen or possibly happen and what the remedies are for it. And order to cease and operate FSE. I've only ran into one situation, I've been with the city twenty-six years, I've only ran into one situation where we truly needed to have someone stop what they were doing. We called in the Black Hawk County Health, we called in, the building official at the time was Luke Hutright, and the restaurant was shut down until they came into compliance. But I'd say once in twenty-six years is not something everybody has to worry a lot about. Naturally, have appeal of corrective action order or cease, desist order. There's a step that you can go through on that, starts with the superintendent of Waste Management, and naturally it can carry through into the council. So you actually have final say. We can seek additional remedies by going to court. I, that's in there, I think it should stay in there, I think everyone should be aware of it. I don't see it as something that's going to be happening, like I say, once in twenty-six years, we had one restaurant. That's really a brief overview of what I thought that might be the second go-around on this as far as where we're going. Again, it's, the sizing, basically whether you can replace a grease trap with another grease trap is already in the city code. So I thought that was old news, but.
Good. Let's, Larry, let's, Craig or Bob, either one of you, if you've got something that you'd like to feel would be a good add or further information or anything that adds to what Larry said, step up, if not, we'll go to questions.
Let me say this, just.
Get close to the mic before you say anything, please. Thank you.
Just, let me just describe this in principle.
Yeah, give us your name, just so that you're all.
Bob Bamsy.
Thanks.
What we have is an ordinance that says, okay, we need to control the grease or fats, oils, and greases that are going into our system. How that's done, we're providing a lot of flexibility to the individual food service You can have a small unit and clean it every day, if that's the best for you. We don't care. Or you can have a big unit and clean it less frequently. And in essence, rather than us saying, this is what you need to do, we're merely saying, this is the quality of the effluent in terms of FOG that you can discharge to our system. And in essence, that's what the scope of this ordinance does. So it provides a lot of flexibility, but yet meets our needs in saying, we're going to control what's going into the system.
So, that was well said, Bob. If we have a restaurant now that has a grease trap and it's being cleaned regularly and meets our criteria, this ordinance does not say, just because you have a grease trap, you have to put a much larger interceptor outside.
No.
It's meeting the criteria.
Right.
Whether you do that, you've already said it and said it well. Thank you. Craig, do you have anything to add, or, no? David?
I guess it's a question for Bob, since you're still standing. So you're talking about the quality requirement for regarding fats, oils, and grease of discharging into the, into the system. Is it, is it, in essence, is it the quality requirement, or that if you have too much fat, oil, and grease, it clogs the system or constricts the system and causes backups? Is it the backup problem, or just putting too much fat, oil, and grease into our system? Or both?
Yes, I think.
Well, the reason we're getting the FOG out is, is the plugging problem. What we measure is the fats, oils, and grease as a concentration, and we're saying if you discharge fog in excess of one hundred milligrams per liter, that you need to do something. Okay? You need to clean your grease trap more frequently, or you need to install a grease trap, or you do something, but that's our measure is based on that concentration.
Because if you have that concentration, it eventually will cause a clog.
It could.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Generally, but that's what we're trying to avoid, is the clogs and the backups, because it's not a best practice to have backups, and the EPA and DNR kind of look down on that, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
And it's an overall, it will benefit our system. I mean, we'll do less cleaning in the, in the main lines if we can get less grease going into the main lines. I mean, that's, that's, you know, but it is focused on the grease that accumulates in the lines that, that results in slow flows, blockages, hooking up on rags or roots or anything else that we have in there that slows the flows down.
Mr. Schmidt?
So Bob, excuse me, so, so the typical small restaurant owner today that's doing the right thing, his impact after this is going to be a new inspection fee, and that would probably be it, assuming he's been doing the right thing.
Assuming they're doing the right thing and assuming their FOG concentration is below a hundred, they'll see no change other than someone will come in and look at it every once in a while, and they'll have to maintain their log of what they've done, how they cleaned it, what it was when they did clean it, but they won't, they won't be required to do anything substantially different.
And I'm not sure which one of you three this question would be for, but when we're talking about a thirty or forty thousand dollar project, I mean, that raises, I think, all kinds of red flags or potential red flags for folks. And, I mean, what, give us a sense of what would cause or require that.
Well, I'd like to add to what Bob said first. The one hundred parts per million is already in our pretreatment program, so that's not something new, it's just being redefined. The sizing and everything else is already in the city ordinance, so that's just adding, copying it or whatever you want to do and replacing. I was looking online, and if you go online, there's a lot of interesting YouTube videos about cleaning grease traps, or interceptors. Some of them are pretty good and some of them are pretty lame, but I mean, they're there. If you want to look at somebody cleaning a grease trap or grease interceptor, it's a great place to go. I punched up one site that sells, they're, they're a restaurant equipment sales company. Now, this is not installed. There had actually grease traps on there, they were a plastic, I'll say, PVC. They started at seven hundred ninety-nine dollars, they were fifty gallon. The highest one they had on their site, they did not have an outside interceptor, went about seven thousand dollars. Jim Walsh is the only one I know, I don't know him personally, but had one put in, and I was thinking, he said it ran him around thirty thousand dollars. So it's probably like anything else, what you need is the cost. So you figure one for a thousand dollars plus the cost of the installation. I'm not sure that the thousand dollar one would be acceptable under our present ordinance, because it is a grease trap, not an interceptor.
Thanks.
David? I'm sorry, Pat, go ahead.
Larry and Bob are looking, Craig, if a person, or if one of the FSEs decide that they need a new grease trap, they can get another grease trap, or do they got to get an interceptor, according to the ordinance?
Craig can correct me under this, but I think under the universal plumbing code, no, they have to go to an outside grease interceptor. There is an appeal process, and there's always an appeal process. And the bottom line is, you guys make the rules. I mean, you know, it's, if it goes that far, you have to make that decision. On our standpoint, we have to look at it from a technical standpoint and say, no, it has to follow the code.
Okay, and if the churches in the area, they have fall bazaars and festivals and all that, and they have other eatery kinds of things going on, would they be required under this ordinance to get a grease trap or an interceptor? If they don't have anything, would they have to get an interceptor?
That's a possibility. If they, if they cannot meet that one hundred parts per million of discharge, then there's a possibility they would have to, yes.
And the same thing would be for Angvets Legion, anything like that, where they have food service, they would be required, according to the international code, Craig, to get an interceptor rather than a grease trap? And how are these churches and other facilities going to afford a thirty or forty thousand interceptor, let alone have the space to do it if they have no space to do it in?
The code is that you will replace it with an interceptor. Thirty or forty thousand dollars to me is a pretty fancy interceptor, I mean, that's...
Craig, yeah, let's, let's, I don't, I mean, it's sounding like that we're not ever going to be able to use a grease trap anymore. I don't think that's the case at all.
Craig Clark, building official. I'm going to give you a couple different kind of, your question's kind of open-ended there, but I guess if you're asking if a grease trap goes bad and can you replace it, I would say no, you would have to have an interceptor. Now, there's a couple different things that go along with that. Let's use the church or those places. There's also what they talked about, best management practices. So a lot of the grease comes from dishwashers, washing plates, silverware, all that kind of stuff. So if you can get your fog down by doing some of those things, you know, not having a garbage disposal, not having a dishwasher, things like that, you know, there's other sizes that you could use. One of the big key components in, I don't know where the thirty, forty thousand came from, I'm going to give, and I hope these are accurate numbers, because about six months ago, we were out at the Knights of Columbus on La Porte Road, and they have the exact thing we're talking about, an inside intercept, a small inside grease trap, probably forty, fifty pound, pound sledge capacity, and are looking at changing that out. They have to put an outside interceptor in. And I would consider there's pretty extravagant, there are two floors, it's an outside, the grade slopes way away, I mean, it's, it's pretty complex. And we met a plumbing contractor out there, and some people from, I'm not sure if they're on a board or exactly what they're on, and I believe their price was around ten to twelve thousand. Now, that's a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but I think that is one of those worst-case scenarios also. They have two floors, two kitchens to hook up, there's grade problems, there's, there's just a lot of problems with their situation. They have dishwashers, they have all sorts of stuff that hook into it, so, you know, I think that's a, a good number maybe for a worst-case scenario.
But with, like, the Knights of Columbus, they do a lot of, more so than, if you're talking about the majority of churches.
Correct.
Here, now, I guess I don't understand why, if we need to change the international code, we don't change the international code to allow them, if they have nothing right now, to be able to put in a simple grease trap that's going to handle it according to the guidelines that have been established for discharge. I don't understand why that can't happen.
There are certain things that a grease trap can just not handle. So when I say like a garbage disposal or a dishwasher, no grease trap is ever going to handle those two things. The hot water will wash it through the system, no matter of the size, no matter what that is, it needs that time, it needs the capability to get out, go through a pipe, get to that thousand, fifteen hundred gallon, two thousand, whatever size it is, tank outside to cool off, to let that separate. So there is limitations to a grease trap, it just depends on what they do and what their plan of action is, so.
But isn't theoretically a grease trap able to take care of that if you disconnect the, the.
Correct.
Waste disposal?
Correct. Yep.
So why shouldn't that be allowed, Craig?
I guess I'm not saying that's not allowed, but I guess the way they operate today may not be the same as they operate afterwards, and that's a decision whoever is going to have to make. I mean, maybe they say, you know, we wash dishes, we're not going to use styrofoam plates and silverware and throw it away, we want to do dishes. Well, then they're going to have an outside interceptor.
And I think it's important, Pat, I mean, you're, you're kind of pointing out worst-case scenarios for these small enterprises, and that's not our intention, is to cause anybody any hardship. Our intention is to try to, as we've, has been explained, to get the fog out of our system. And I believe that as the dust settles from this, we'll, we'll work with those biggest, I don't want to use offenders, the folks that submit the most stuff to the system and we'll work down. So those churches, the bazaars and so forth are going to be way down on our list of people that we're going to try to make their life hard, but we are going to eventually have to take a look at it.
One of the things that maybe adds a little light here, a lot of times what you're seeing is grease trap, excuse me, grease traps that are missing baffles, missing Ts and that type stuff. And I just asked Craig, there is no reason that a person with a grease trap, a lot of the old ones were cast iron, heavy, just don't wear out, but the baffles in them are steel plates and that type stuff, the Ts are normally copper, would wear out. You could simply go in and clean that one up you have and operate it the way it's supposed to be and replace the parts in it that need to be replaced, and you most likely won't have a problem as long as you're on a good cleaning schedule. You've got to determine when you're at twenty-five percent of the capacity of that trap and cleaning it to that point. You can't wait till it gets forty-five, fifty percent of that, because at that point, you're going to be discharging more fog than you're allowed to. Not, not every little restaurant or anything else, like Craig says, disconnect the dishwasher, disconnect the garbage disposal, get those things off your grease trap, use it the way it was probably intended to be used, and you shouldn't have a problem. I'm not saying you aren't going to.
Any more questions, Tom?
Where would you put the dishwasher waste at?
Well, you would put it.
Are you talking about hand washing the dishes, or are you talking about going to styrofoam? What are you talking about?
Either.
Yeah, those, those folks that just use styrofoam, Tom, and everything, everything, food waste and everything goes into the garbage, then you don't have to wash those dishes to that magnitude.
A lot of these, excuse me, a lot of these places, if they use the best management practices, could lower what they're putting in that grease trap considerably. I mean, if you take, I don't, you take a pan, you throw hamburgers on it, throw it in the oven and cook it, pull it out, take the hamburgers off, just throw it in your sink and drain it, it's driving up the percentage of fats and oils or greases that you're putting into your system. If you simply take paper towels, wipe that off, take the paper towels, throw them in, into the trash, the regular trash, then you've lowered what you're putting in your grease trap by, who knows, five hundred, a thousand percent, I don't know if you stop and think about a layer of grease there and wiping everything off. Little things like that can make a lot of differences. When you're talking about churches and... When you're talking about churches and places like that, do little things like that. You meet that 100 parts per million. We're not gonna require you to have a grease trap or interceptor. There's a lot of things that you could do in-house to help yourself.
Generally, David, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Larry, when you when you have a grease trap, how do you actually, you know, measure against the quality requirement using a grease trap?
You take a sample of the effluent, which we will be doing, sample sample effluent coming out of the grease trap or interceptor. We'll take it back to plant, lab will run oils and greases on it and we'll know what it is.
So, how does a person that has one, how do they know in general when to clean it? Is it just?
Well, hopefully, this is one of the things that I hope the city will be helping the FSEs with, that we will get samples and tell you, this will be a part of our inspection program. We will get samples and tell you what your effluent quality is. We will make a recommendation if you if you're going along, you're saying it clean it once every six months. We come out there, you're putting out 500 parts per million. We'll probably tell you, why don't you try cleaning it once a month for a while and let us get some samples taken? And it may be that we come back and say, look, once a month's not often enough. Try cleaning it once every two weeks. We're not just gonna go in and say, alright, you're putting out 500 parts per million, we're shutting you down, we're gonna make you put in interceptor and every, we're not going to do that. It's a program designed to work with the FSE, so they have a good indication of what they're doing. Maybe they can do some internal house cleaning or whatever and help themselves out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Continuing on, so the fats, oils and grease, we've we've we're pretty clear. It's horrible for the collection system, but we're taking those fats, oils and grease and still putting them at the treatment plant.
Probably the lagoon.
Lagoon.
Well, that that is one of the decisions we have to make now is to help best to treat it at the lowest cost.
But the the problem is with the collection system. It's not treating it once it hits the lagoon or or somewhere else, right?
Treating treating grease is always a problem. You have to digest that stuff and it produces gas. And that's what we're looking at, our best location. Would it be better to put it in our thermophilic digesters? Would it be best to go to the lagoon? There's a double-edged sword with going to the lagoon. It produces gas. The company is buying the gas off of us, makes more money, we make more money. The cost of operating something at the lagoon except FOG five, six days a week, we gotta weigh that in, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Pat.
Is it okay to hear from Mr. Hunley?
That's I was going next. I wanted to I wanted the council to ask questions first, Tom?
Mr. Mayor, one one last question. So, when we implement this, the people that clean the traps or the interceptors and transport the material to the the treatment plant have to be licensed?
They are they will be licensed through our department. We already we already have a a permit program, as you might call it, with several haulers. What we want to do, we wanna manifest all this because we don't wanna be taking grease or or oil or fats from Cedar Rapids because their price is too high to dispose of it. And believe it or not, we've had a couple of them try that. So, we want to ensure two things, that we have control of where it's coming from and that they are properly trained in cleaning a grease trap or interceptor because I I won't say not everyone, but I've seen a couple of them do it and it wouldn't come up to our standards how they were doing it. So, we want to train them as to what we expect every time.
Can the owner clean his own? Does he have to?
As far as I know right now, the owner can clean their own. We just don't wanna dump back into the system.
All right. For those of you that came today to this, generally speaking, work sessions are to inform the council and and there's not public participation. But in this particular case, you know, this is as a result of you guys wanting to share your thoughts with us also. So, we will open it up and I know, Joe, I think you have would like to address the council. So, please, anybody that's out there.
Yeah, you still do, just just so we know who you are.
Joel Hunley, 915 Eastern Avenue, local birder flipper. And I do have a copy of those those videos on YouTube that Larry was talking about.
Okay.
They are funny. Not all of them, but anyway. I guess the question I had, some of them were answered, was the first the first one was, you know, do we have to install, if my grease trap would would fail, and it is a 30 gallon, I thought it was 15, would I have to buy an interceptor? An outside interceptor? I'm not saying, not stainless steel, it's probably got another 25, 30 years. But if it would fail, would I have to buy an outside interceptor for anywhere from 15 to 30,000 dollars? That was one of the questions.
Well, let's answer that. I I believe that that's in the international plumbing code, that you would have to do that, Joe, but I think it doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance. I think that would be true today, no matter what. Did I answer that correctly?
Yep, Craig Clark, building official, that is exactly correct. The plumbing code requires that if, exactly what he said, it failed today, he would have to have an outside interceptor. The ordinance that we're looking at says the exact same thing. So, it really, it has no effect on what he would have to do if that thing goes bad and he has to totally replace it.
Mayor, I I think a measure of failure is what we're looking at. If it's simply baffles and T's and that type stuff.
Right.
Or even with with Joel having a stainless steel trap, if he developed a pinhole in it, you can repair it. So, I mean, to say if it fails, if it doesn't meet, if it is repaired and cannot meet the 100 parts per million, Craig is absolutely correct. It has failed and is not usable.
Okay, thank you. But again, I'll reiterate, that's not, that would be in today. That's the plumbing code, that's not this ordinance.
Can that ever be amended, that part of the plumbing code? For, let's say you don't have a grease trap or grease trap today. I do, it won't affect me, but it may affect some of my colleagues, some of the independents. Maybe they wanna put a grease trap in. Can they, instead of spending, instead of spending 15,000 dollars, let's say, could they spend 1,000 dollars, 2,000 dollars?
Joe, I'll I'll let Craig answer that. But but I I believe what we're trying to do here is take every case-by-case basis and look at the look at the the FSE and what kind is it, what's their volume? How much food do they put in there? Again, I'll I'll say this several times, our our intent here is not to make life hard on anybody, particularly our independent business owners. Craig?
You answered that exactly right. The only part I'm gonna add is we can amend the plumbing code, it's the international plumbing code, but we typically adopt that about every three years. That would be the time when we could amend it. I didn't go back, but that has been in the plumbing code for a long time and we've never amended it. And I I'm sure it's been in there 15 years, I'm not sure how long, but it but it'd be something we could definitely talk about when we go to amend the codes. We do amend all the codes to some form or another.
Craig, thanks. Sorry, sorry, can I just interrupt here with Mr. Hunley?
Sure, Mr. Morsy.
Okay. The question I had was, but we haven't had a situation like this come up where the fog ordinance is being developed and being put to churches and all these other places that they're gonna have to have something. So, if if they can get by with a simple grease trap, then wouldn't it be worth now amending the international code to allow them to do that rather than to have to invest in one of these pricey pieces of equipment that they could avoid by getting a smaller grease trap to cost less?
It's a council decision. In the end, Pat, if if four of you want to amend the international plumbing code, that's been the way it is for years and years and years, then you can do that. My suggestion is, is it's worked quite well for a long time on individual basis and and we then we keep our standards up. If you wanna lower our standards, I don't think we're doing that because of this ordinance.
I'm not suggesting that, Mr. Mayor. What I'm just suggesting is that is that the churches on that, if they don't have any grease trap or anything at this point, there hasn't been an ordinance that required them to have it, so they didn't get it. Not as being required to have it. And so, if they're required to have something to take care of fog and if it can be taken care of by a grease trap rather than a pricey interceptor, then why can't we allow them to do that by changing or amending the international code and changing the ordinance to that effect as well?
Craig, go ahead.
I'm trying to, the best answer that I think is, you know, I say it's an outside interceptor. I mean, that's kinda, but there is exceptions in the code for everything. So, you know, I don't wanna use examples, but there is, we have done that in the past. You know, I'm trying to think of a church or something along that lines that we've done that in the past, but there is some out there. But we have also done a lot of remodels on, you know, a church does a new kitchen remodel and that kinda stuff where they do put in outside interceptors. But if they're just putting a new three-compartment sink in, let's say, they put the 40-pound under sink sledge capacity trap that we're talking about inside. So, there there's flexibility there. I I think it just depends on the circumstance and every situation is a little different.
So, Craig, can you? I'm sorry, it's to Pat's point and to the mayor's comment about quality. Can you explain decreasing the quality or changing the quality by requiring them to put in a trap?
I think I said lower standards. I didn't say our quality.
Yeah, I guess as long as that, I mean, the whole basis of the thing, if that effluent is coming out under our limit, we don't really care how they're doing that. As long as it's just being discharged at that limit. And this ordinance is setting that limit. It's already there, but I think it does a better job of setting it and having a program for it. So, the, you know, the building code, and this is a little plumbing code is a more philosophy of if you touch it, you have to bring it to a new standard. And that's how any of the codes are, regardless of plumbing, electrical, building, all those. So, with that being said, I guess the standard is, if we would just say, I don't even know how we would say it, but if we're gonna lower that standard in that plumbing code, I don't think we'd lower the standard. I think we would make exceptions and maybe a different appeal process for those standards. I think our still process would be an outside interceptor, but this is a process you can go through.
Joel? See what you started there, Craig.
But our goal is, one thing, is to reduce the fog. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
And I'm all for that. I guess I'm looking for solutions, but I'm looking for solutions that'll make it economic, economically feasible for everyone. And I'm not up here to complain. And I wanna thank you for for having that meeting last Thursday with me and Mr. Chilko. That was awesome, that was real, real professional. And I guess what I have to say, if 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 somebody doesn't have something right now because maybe they were, they just didn't do it, you know, can we amend something so we can bring them up to some of the code? Just to reduce, you know, oatmeal's better than no meal. If we do something, it's better than nothing, you know? And I talked to the EPA, there's a couple of guys there, I'll give you their numbers if you need them, John Dunn and a Paul Marshall. They are, one's a pre-treatment guy, one's a after after it's treated. And they're really, really good and both of them have 30 years' experience. And they say grease trap's great, all they are asking for is a program. Doesn't have to be an ordinance, an ordinance has more teeth, but a teeth could bite you if you're if you're if it's not written correctly. And I guess, if you have any questions, just ask me. And I love what you did to the place, it's really nice.
Thanks, Joe.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I guess, just for clarification, that there is a program today or or an ordinance that you do have to have some kind of grease trap or something today, right? And what this new ordinance does is really kind of change the line of quality of what can be discharged?
Yes, Craig Clark, building official. So, the real catch here is currently, if you build, yeah. If you build, let's say, a new restaurant, we're gonna tell you you have to have an X-size outside interceptor, this much capacity based off your fixture loads and all this stuff inside the building. Once the CO is issued, we walk away from that building and we never look at it again. There's nothing in the plumbing code that says we go back and check to make sure you're cleaning that every six months or you're doing. There's nothing in any ordinance or any documents or ordinance we have that gives us that authority. So, that is what this program, I think, is more doing is giving us a program to inspect these and clean them, keep them at that amount that we want coming into our sewer.
That's very well said, thanks, Craig.
Anything further, counsel?
Pat? One, I'm sorry, Mr. Deeds, go ahead. Give us your name and address.
Sure, David Deeds, 922 Mulberry. Again, I'd echo the comments that we're we're certainly in favor of reducing this and keeping our water clean. That's that's a good thing. JSA, we're currently going through the process of installing a grease interceptor in ground outside the building on a rehab project we're doing right now. So, we are going through and complying with the code as contemplated, as not necessarily as adopted at this point. Just a quick question, and this relates specifically to the section that requires it to be outside. And generally, I understand that concept, but in a downtown environment, sometimes there may not be property in which to put a grease interceptor outside. Sometimes the buildings expanded to the entire property lines and there's nowhere to put it. So, I would appreciate if we could, and I don't have specific language for you suggested, but there'd be some sort of accommodation there that would require the city to accommodate requests for encroachments, I say, for example, under sidewalks for those kinds of environments. While current staff may be very open to that, who knows what staff replaces these current staff? There'd be something there that allows the property owner to have a path forward if their building takes up the entire site, for example. There are four buildings I can think of that we're working on right now that essentially come out to the edges of the property line. And we would have nowhere to put one should we want to.
Craig, do you have a thought on that?
Of course. I guess, I think you're more looking for a program for like going on city right away and that kinda stuff.
That's correct, yes.
Not, I mean, that's something we would have to look at. I assume we could take it through the planning and zoning and that process to get an encroachment agreement. It may be a difficult thing downtown with all the utilities and that kinda stuff. And and what we've done in the past, even with some of JSA properties, we have worked for putting inside ones in two. You know, a lot of times if you're doing a large remodel and you have a back door, we set it right inside that back door, so it doesn't hinder their day-to-day operations as much if they have to come clean it and those types. So, those are all things we can look at. I mean, I don't think this changes the ordinance. There always has to be that flexibility to work with those people. And obviously, in the downtown environment, he's exactly right, it's the toughest place to do that.
Yeah, and I will say that I do appreciate the working with Mr. Clark and his staff. They've been good to work with on on issues as we come up with those. However, there are segments in here like the 24-inch manhole cover. I can't imagine one of those inside a building. So, how do we accommodate those kinds of? And again, should we, not that this should ever happen, but should we ever have staff that is not as willing to work with us? It starts to become a sledgehammer that makes basically improvements to our downtown potentially impossible, so.
David? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mr. Deeds, what what kinda costs are you seeing on your interceptor project?
I can't speak to the one that I think Mr. Walsh referred or was quoted at earlier, but that was before I worked. It was a fairly grand project. The current one that we're working on right now is something in excess of 10,000 dollars. That doesn't, that did not require any additional plumbing inside the facility. That's just simply digging the hole, putting in a 750-gallon interceptor with the appropriate concrete work back over the top of it. So, somewhere in that neighborhood is what we've seen for that volume. Now, interestingly enough, I, you don't think about it, but that size of interceptor, I think I made a note here, it's something in the neighborhood of like seven foot by five foot by six foot, which is a very large structure, essentially. which is a very large structure essentially. And requires a fair amount of space to be able to put it, which is back to my point earlier that we, particularly downtown, we may not have places to put them very easily, so.
Pat?
Yeah, Mr. Deeds, would any of the buildings that you're talking about where there would need a fog, uh, kind of, uh, equipment? Would a grease trap work just as well as an interceptor?
I, I can't say that. I, I don't know. I can imagine, for example, uh-
I would know. I, I would know, Pat, no. I, I had a grease trap at Jamison's when I ran Jamison's. Everybody knows I used to have Jamison's. And when that kitchen, it was at capacity. I cleaned it once a week and it was always full. So, when the kitchen got expanded and we started serving more meals down there, we had to have something bigger. A grease trap would absolutely not, not handle it.
Even a big grease-
No, no.
I, I do find, just as a side note, a bit of irony that we're trying to get grease out, but we're advocating putting more styrofoam in the landfill in the process with our ordinance. Yeah. So.
Should government work?
Uh, exactly. So, thank you, thank you for listening.
So, Mr. Deeds?
Sure.
Would any of your buildings go get by with a grease trap?
Uh, there are some existing restaurants that are, you know, certainly that you could think of as probably being extremely low-use type of environments, no fryers, no dishwashers, that at some point then conceivably we'll have to have a grease trap and it's in-
But if you're not allowed to have a grease trap-
I'm sorry, an interceptor, my mistake, yeah.
And is, is the seven hundred and fifty gallon one the, or pound one, whatever measurement they go by, is, is that the smallest to come in or?
I can't, I, I don't know that for sure. We went, uh, back and forth quite a bit with Young Plumbing, who, uh, is, is the one installing this for us at the project that they were working on. Uh, there are certain sizes which are standard sizes. And they're actually more, they're less, they're less costly than custom sizes. Uh, so, we actually only by our calculation, we only needed six hundred and fifty gallons, but we went to the seven fifty because it was a standard size and therefore was at least on some level more cost-effective than what, what we actually put in.
Okay. Yes, sir.
My name's Al Manning. I own Sub City, thirty forty-five Kim Avenue. And I just wanted to get a clarification. I don't, either I didn't understand something or, um, it seemed contradictory to me. Cause I thought what I, um, what I heard was basically anything that meets the definition of an FSC has to have either a grease trap or a food inter, or a, or an interceptor, sorry. Um, and if you have a grease trap and for whatever reason needs to be replaced, then you'd have to replace it with an outside interceptor. But then I heard, um, some of the speakers talking about, uh, well, it would be depend on your, um, you know, effluent or volume that you produce. And maybe you wouldn't need to, to go to an interceptor. And if it was less than a hundred parts per million, you wouldn't even need a grease, grease trap. Uh, I don't know. Am I, I, I'm not quite understanding how that, it seems contradictory because it seems like, um, on the one hand, it's saying all FSCs have to have one or the other. If you have a grease trap now and it's functioning and whatever, that's fine. If you have to replace it, then you have to go to an interceptor.
I, Craig, you wanna take a shot? Or Larry or anybody? I-
I guess the, so, what we, I guess there's different things we can look at when sizing grease traps. So, when, I guess, this is probably a lot, um, more in-depth than I want to get, but, so there's certain things in the plumbing code that throw out that inside interceptor automatically. That is a dishwasher or a garbage disposal. The plumbing code says you cannot hook those up to a grease trap. It has to be an outside interceptor. So, if you have one of those two things, you're automatically to the interceptor. Then it also goes in to, it bases it off plumbing fixtures. So, if you have three floor drains, um, a three compartment sink, a hand wash sink, and, um, some other things that are hooked to that, then those are all calculated and then that's based off the size. Um, there's a lot of different technologies out there for sizing these based off, uh, meals per hour, all this kind of stuff that we do look at. I mean, um, we had a restaurant that came to town and they said they can use a two hundred and fifty gallon, they use it all over the nation. They provided me three years' worth of data showing the actual tickets that the gentleman that cleans it, tests it and says, this is how much grease we have. They serve the same food all over the United States. So, those are all things we look at to determine that size. So, the way the code works is to always say, you have to have an outside interceptor. But this is the process you can go to if you want to do something different.
Okay. So, is Bob Osgood the person that you would start with?
Correct.
In that process?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks. I like that very good conversation today, very worthwhile, I think. And we got two minutes, counsel. If anybody has any wrap-up statements or questions. If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you.
I'm Cantrell, I'm the President of the Board for Christian Community Development that oversees House of Hope. I guess at this point, we're kind of too in limbo as to what the Historical Society is wanting to do with that building. It came up to us probably close to two years ago, and there was not an interest in it until all of us, currently, so we're just kind of waiting to also, what's going to happen. If anybody has any other questions.
Mr. Deeds, is there any?
Just kind of to elaborate what House of Hope said, that, uh, it's David Deeds, 22 Wilbury. We've been, I've just been interested in, is, is, in this as a citizen. I live down, down the street here, as many of you know, but also I view this neighborhood as an extension of downtown, and an important part of the next phase of growth, particularly the east side of downtown. Now, I, you know, as we've, we've met twice, I think, Councilman Schmidt, and Councilman Morrissey, and Household Vice President, and Executive Director, met a couple of times. The most recent time, we talked about some alternatives. In other words, what might be some other options for them, to accomplish their goal of a more unified campus, perhaps accomplish the city's goal, I think, related, as it relates to the CVS site, and, you know, what, what other options might be. Now, what, what underpins this whole conversation, and my interest in it is, first of all, it's an extension of downtown. It's kind of one of the next natural outgrowths of what's happening positive on Fourth Street. As we look down East Fourth Street in particular, but both sides of Fourth Street, all of the positive changes on Fourth Street have happened because of one thing, well, one primary, often one person, but very often, one thing that has enabled that to happen, which is the historic status of the structures. Now, if we look also at the project that is still moving its way through the process with KWWL, that's a project that is happening because of the historic status of the structure. It's one of those few competitive, I shouldn't say few, one of the competitive advantages that Waterloo has over other communities in the region, is that we have, even today, still a relatively large stock of historic structures. And with those historic structures comes the ability to bring in outside dollars. I agree it is tax dollars, but it's not Waterloo citizens' property tax dollars. It's bringing in outside dollars to help revitalize our neighborhoods. And it's these historic structures that makes it possible. These same types of incentives are not available for vacant lots. So, we have historic structures that we can keep, we can find ways to revitalize neighborhoods using those, that, that method of bringing in outside dollars to help turn around our city. It's another tool in the toolbox that I think that we as a city need to utilize. And that Walnut neighborhood in particular, is one that has been identified all the way back to 2000, or, sorry, 1992, that is a neighborhood that should be listed on the National Register of Historic Places, but has not still to this day. There's been no action taken by the city to make that actually happen. There have been some studies and so forth, but nothing's ever moved forward with it. So, I, what I, what we're really, what I'm really asking here, as a private citizen, but also as an interested party in terms of JSA development, is the fact that it's not something that we are saying at this point today that we're going to undertake, but it's something that I think we should attempt to undertake, to find ways to utilize other tools beyond the ones that we do use, to revitalize our neighborhoods, particularly ones that are this close to downtown. Having said that, we appreciate, I certainly appreciate what House of Hope does. They do serve an important mission, and it's one that I think needs to continue. And it's one that we certainly want to help them find an answer that works for them as well, I think, as we, as we work through this process. Simply enough, I think I had a conversation, basically, at this point, at a minimum, would appreciate another four weeks, not to delay this thing permanently, it's, can't be delayed permanently, I get that, but another four weeks to try to find a financing structure that will make it possible to rehabilitate that house. Now, you may ask yourself, well, what does it cost to rehabilitate that house? Well, ballpark, again, just off the top of my head, is something that I, I work on, about $200,000. Now, can you sell that house in that neighborhood right now for $200,000? No, you can't. But, when you couple the historic state and federal tax credits with that, you get a, basically, a bought-down cost of rehabil, of fully rehabilitated house of somewhere in the neighborhood of $110,000. Now, can we sell it for 110?
Yeah.
It's quite possible. We're selling houses, the city is selling houses just over here, over on Lafayette Street, for more than that. Smaller houses at that. And so, let's just try this tool that we have in front of us, let's see if we can make this work, so that we can have another strategy for revitalizing Waterloo.
David, I thought that one of the conversations we had last week was like a one-year delay. Is that no longer?
Well, no, I, I think that's a separate issue. I think, it's, I can't speak for the Historic Preservation Commission. I believe Ed Odison is here to do that. I, I believe that they've sent a letter to you. I did see a copy that our meeting with Household last week. And I think it's, that's something they're requesting. I, I think it's, my personal opinion is, it's something that should strongly be considered, as well as finding the funding to move forward the, the listing of the, that neighborhood on the National Register. One other thing I didn't mention, since you mentioned it, is, the right, why this is important, is you, National Register listing of a district enables and opens up these historic tax credits for lower costs than trying to do it individual building by individual building. It also lowers the threshold for what's historic. Some individual buildings may not make it, but as a group, they can make it. And the more demolition that we have in a neighborhood, the less and less historic fabric that you have left, and therefore, the less and less likely you can ever achieve that National Register status.
So, David, what, what or why is this getting that area designated as a historical neighborhood, why has that not progressed? I mean, what's been the holdup on that? Do you know? I mean, is that?
I suspect it's just a lack of dedicating funds to the process. It's, I've spoken with our consultants at Lewis Berger, who the city used for their FEMA study, who we as JSA have used for other doc, historic documentations. It's our consultant's opinion that that district, a small version of that district, which I can give you a map of what her, our variation on it is, could be, still be established as it stands today. The loss of the Waterloo Boat Building, for example, was a damage to that district being a, being listed. It's gone, we can't change that. What we can change is what's still there. What we can keep is what still remains. And it was her opinion that, at this point, that is still possible. Now, you might say, well, who's this consultant? This consultant is the same person who, and that firm is the one who just added the Westside Historic Commercial District on, on September 22nd, to Waterloo's third commercial historic, or third historic district. This is also the same firm that successfully listed the KWWO building on the National Register of Historic Places on September 22nd, keeping that rehabilitation project moving forward. So, these people know what they're talking about, I guess is my point.
So, would, would, would it be the city's court that that ball is in, or whose court is that ball in to get that done?
Whoever wants to put up the money, I guess. You know, most likely, it would be, as with, the city does very often, by engaging consultants, say, along the 63 corridor, to pursue funding for what was then the Highway 63 CDC. There were funds pulled from, I don't know where, probably the Logan Tiff is my guess, and dedicated to that purpose. This, I view, is no different. It's an economic development tool, is really what it is. That's really, to me, that's largely what historic preservation is about, is not only preserving our history, but also as an economic development tool. That's really what it is.
We also own the 222 Walnut, the brick building down the road. Is that part of the historic, what you're talking about?
Oh, as far as that?
The district?
Without the study being completed, I don't know that the, there is an answer to that. Could it potentially be? Possible, yes. Which would then open up potential tax credits that could be used to revitalize that building, should that be appropriate.
As I said, you know, we own that building. Our interest would then be investing in that building. It's, you know, wearing, wearing down. It's got a 30-year-old boiler system in it, that we don't know how long it's going to last. We want to keep our women and our children very safe in that home, and, so that would leave us the alternative of keeping that home, and just putting dollars into the 222 Walnut. We have invested 25 years in that neighborhood. We do not want to leave it. It's become comfort zone for all of us there. And we have made it a better place, we take pride in it, we love our neighbors, and we have a vision, and we're strategically planning for that location. I know that you may think it's really easy to just up and move us somewhere else in the city, that's not what we want, that's not what we're about, that's not our mission. And, so for whatever it's worth, that's what we would like you to know.
Did, did Barb and Diane talk to you about some of Mr. Deeds' various suggestions, two of, or one or two of which were, you'd end up with those two older houses refurbished to be able to be utilized, plus then building like a six-plex or something, and a vacant lot, and continuing with your?
Well, and the vacant lot would be where?
On Franklin.
It faces Franklin, it joins your backyard. It joins the backyard of those two properties.
I don't know if we would want to have the children ride on Franklin, that has been a concern of ours, you know?
I, I thought, I thought part of that project was, then that you'd have that shared common backyard, wasn't it?
That's right, shared common space, that common.
All for Franklin.
David, I think you need to come up with some comments.
The concept, and again, we can't plan your idea facility. That's, that's not my, that's not my role, and I get that. Like I said earlier, you guys do great things, we want you to continue to do great things for the city. It's just that, is there an alternative? There's, the dilemma is, is that the city of Waterloo has a great deal of vacant land already. Do we really need to continue to create more vacant lands? And, so that was, that was kind of the conversation we had. There is a vacant lot that is part of that Hayes property, that does adjoining that common courtyard, which, you know, Barb shared with us was kind of the vision for your common courtyard there. Fantastic. We're just asking for some consideration of alternatives to a 12-plex, which may or may not, depending on how designed, fit into the neighborhood, certainly doesn't help the historic district.
No, I mean, I understand that, it doesn't help your plan. We're not looking at creating more vacant lots for the city either. We're looking at, you know, making a home for homeless women and children, giving us more opportunities to home, to give them homes than what they have right now, that our program allows us. And for us to, we, the house that we have already at, on Walnut Street, the 306, you know, we have to keep that up to code standard, as far as being over 100-year-old home. To have those other two homes, to have to do that with too, that possibility, you're talking about a lot of money being put into something. Us as a board, you know, we want to be good stewards of the money that we get. We're not federally funded, we're not state-funded. All of our money comes from grants from the city, from the community. And we want to keep our program going, and so, we want to be good stewards of what we have. And we want to keep helping women and children who need to make a change in their lives, and to be more productive people, and more competent people in themselves, so.
Well, I think that, speaking on behalf of some of the council, we respect what the House of Hope and your organization's been doing, and we would like to do anything we can do to accommodate that, and strengthen that, and put you in an even better position. If that could be done in conjunction with facilitating a historical designation for that neighborhood, I mean, that would be kind of a win-win thing. And then, at the end of the day, if the city also could end up with your current rep building for economic development, you know, future purposes, then that would be kind of the trifecta. So, I don't know if, if you think 30 days will get us anything, because I think that's what you're looking for, isn't it?
We have four weeks.
Or four weeks, yeah. Because I, I don't think the House of Hope Board, and I don't want to speak on behalf of your board either, but I don't think you're interested in a one-year delay. But I don't know how you feel about a four-week delay. Because I know there are some issues with the boiler, and some other stuff that need to be addressed.
Honestly, I'm, I'm not sure what a four-week delay is going to do. I mean, we've already delayed this four weeks. That house was set to be demolished, the city had already agreed to that. And then now, all of a sudden, it's not going to happen, and, you know, now it's maybe refurbished and revitalized into something new. I don't see that four week, four more weeks is really going to change anybody's mind. I don't think it's going to give us any more answers than what we already have right now. I could be wrong, but that's just the way I'm viewing it.
Certainly, I understand that. Correct me if I'm wrong, there is no design yet, there's no fundraising that's done yet?
We are in the process of that.
Have you started it? At this point?
No.
Right. So, the, the point is, is we're both kind of in the same spot, I guess, in terms of this process. And, so, the reason the four weeks kind of came up is basically, that doesn't delay it overly. A new building's not going to get built this winter, anyway. But what four weeks does, is it allows just four more weeks to attempt to identify that $200,000 essentially to, basically, the funding to rehabilitate the house. Put it back on the tax rolls, make it a positive tax-paying property, give us, if, part of that deal would probably be necessary, the city would be willing to come up with the 15,000, maybe 20,000 for historic designation, the study that would take that through that process. Those things could move in concert with each other through the process. There are, as we know, I think many of us know, there are several other challenged buildings in that neighborhood, and then historic districts is going to help give those buildings a shot. There's the old Walnut, oh, I think it was the Walnut Baptist Church is vacant, and has been vacant. That'll be the next building we're talking about in the neighborhood, having to come down, without an alternate use. Without historic tax credits, it's going to be tough to find an alternate use for a church that seats in excess of 1,000 people. Do we really want to be, find ourselves a year from now talking about tearing that building down too?
Mr. Chairman?
Could I just add one more thing? Just to make it known, we are 501(c)(3), and so, we will not be giving any tax credits to, if we own those homes, or we build there. City's not going to earn any taxes from us. We, however, will be having women who are getting themselves back on their feet, and going to school, and getting jobs, and they will be paying taxes, but...
Ms., Mr.?
Anne Lyons, I'm just a volunteer with the House of Hope. I got, kind of came to the dance late, but the one thing I think that's very confusing for us is, when we came to this meeting four weeks ago, we really were, thought it was just kind of a, a formality, because that house was already set to be demolished. Judge Stout was taking things, was, you know, going to be taking some items of worth from it, and then it was coming down, and then it, you know, everything changed from that moment on. So, just wanted to make that point.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Odison is here. Mr. Odison, could you give us some information from your perspective?
Ed Odison, I'm the chairman of Waterloo Historic Preservation Commission. You should have a copy of the letter that I sent to the, to the council and to the mayor. A little background, we did not realize anything about this house until just recently. Prior to knowing about the house and the situation, our commission had been looking into trying to get this neighborhood designated, and what it would take, and what funds it would take to do that. So, this kind of fell into us, and that's why we're now asking for the things I had included in my letter. Anything else I would have to say now is, just to be a repeat of what David Deeds has gone through, too. We're much on the same page there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to table this for four weeks.
Who?
Noel.
Noel? Yes, do you have something to say on this? You did provide a handout.
I did provide a handout. You have it in front of you. Just go and kind of go through the, a little bit of the history of it, and what, what some of the council members and all them sat out there, and went out there and talked about. Building has sat vacant for approximately seven years. We're talking about the cognizance of the momentum out there with the commercial development in this area for the CVS Pharmacy, the new strip mall, other things happening along the Franklin Street corridor, including the KWWL project. This is also a difficult block and site to rebuild. The block is located in the middle of the transitional land use area with the southern boundary of Franklin Street and neighborhood, a fragile neighborhood to the north. This particular block has two suburban-style commercial developments in near proximity, one abutting to the south, built in 1997, the other to the southeast, just built in 2013. These two properties currently pay approximately $32,000 a year in taxes. The rest of the block's a consortium of billboard lots, empty lots, eight houses and two House of Hope houses. All these properties together pay approximately $5,900 per year in taxes. Four of the lots, lots are tax-exempt. And the one empty lot had a house demolished in 2010. I wanted to discuss what we discussed a little bit again on the, out on the site for the council members that were there. The House of Hope is open to selling their property, 222 Walnut. The building has become difficult for them to keep up on maintenance. The acquisition of this site, and the abutting parking lot owned by the owner of the Walnut Court Building would open up this site for better chances of new commercial development. The CVS Outlet was designed to allow for 18,000 square-foot commercial building to fit upon the site with adequate parking. Obviously, squaring it off here would add to that. As you've seen, there's a letter from the Historic Preservation Commission, a group of citizens that would like to see the area designated as a historic district, and save all the homes in the area. They note the need to save the homes on the fringe of downtown Waterloo, and start now before any more are lost. They do, they believe this area will be eligible due to the recent approval of the KWWL building on the National Register of Historic Places. Staff would note the concern with the church and school having been demolished, a home in 2010 demolished, and the current home on East Third Street estimated at $200,000 each for renovation, whether or not this is a realistic goal. Staff is supportive of historic preservation efforts in the city of Waterloo, having worked on various and numerous projects in downtown Waterloo, including the Highland Neighborhood, Marsh Place Building, the Blacks Building, the President's Hotel, the KWWL Building, the Fowler-Hoffa Building, the former Rath Administration Building, the former Walden's Block, the Unique Building, which was the former Great Western Depot, the Walker Shoe Building, and others. So, what do we do? I know that they want to have, and table this. One idea staff had was that both groups have good intentions in what they want to do. Maybe we should propose that they both present their best project for the staff to review, rank, present to the city council. Criteria, criteria to be considered. Number one, the project, is it a renovation? Is it demolition or new construction? Write a detailed description of the project. Number two, timeline, what is the proposed timeline for the project to commence? What steps are needed, and when will they occur? The district idea would take a study, the House of Hope project would take fundraising. Number three, financing, how is the project to be financed in all phases? Once the study is back, who will fund the renovation of the home? Does the House of Hope have commitments already to move ahead with major donors? What other factors are involved? And number four, the House of Hope will want the city to acquire 222 Walnut, the renovation team will want the city to fund the district, even though it may come back negative. Number five, does the city need any financial proof of moving ahead with the project at some early or middle point? That is, if the city chooses one course over another, how long do they have to finish the project, or start the project with permits, et cetera? I went through and put some incentive, information that would be available for projects. Other information, the site is Zone R3, the block, or the half of the block to the south is Zone C2 along Franklin. Every other block is Zone C2, commercial district on the north side of Franklin, all the way from Highway 63 to East 8th Street, which is where the former Expo site was. Franklin Street is a four-lane roadway with approximately 13,800 cars per day in this area, so it's not necessarily a pedestrian-friendly roadway, even though I know some people believe it's an extension of downtown. And then I did go ahead and put together, this is a development proposal packet that we've used before, and I just put together the steps on that, again, for everyone to see in front of them.
Noel, quick question on your, so what to do, item number five, does the city need any financial proof, some earlier midpoint? I mean, wouldn't that be just part of the typical development agreement? I mean, is that something out of the ordinary, or?
I mean, unless we're going to have a, some kind of a financial proof right up front, we have some concerns with the ability to go ahead and fund, especially the renovation, but both projects, instead of having it sit there for another couple of years and nothing happening with it, we'd want to have some specific steps in place to make sure it's moving ahead.
I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this for four weeks.
Second. Motion, proper seconds, to table this item for four weeks?
The only thing I, I would like to add, and David, I mean this in a very positive way, but, you know, for the last four weeks, I'm not really sure how many wheels have turned. I mean, we've had a couple of meetings, but some of what we're talking about doing on the next four weeks, in hindsight, I wish would have been done the last four weeks.
Sure.
Because I would like to move this along one way or the other.
Yep, absolutely. I agree with you. And I will say that the suggestion from staff sounds like a fantastic suggestion. So, for what that's worth.
I assume this is reasonably acceptable to the House of Hope folks?
Mr. Schmidt, any further discussion?
Oh, sir.
So, those in favor of tabling this item for four weeks, was that right, four weeks?
Four weeks.
Four weeks. Vote aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That item is tabled for four weeks.
Mr. Chairman, item number two, we've got a request by Marcus Pratt and the Bosnian Islamic Association of Waterloo, to purchase a portion of Marigold Drive right of way south of its intersection with Afton Drive for the price of $1 for each half of the street.
Second.
Motion in proper second. Any discussion on this item?
Do we need to hear anything about it?
Do you need to hear more about this item?
I can give you a brief summary. Noel Anderson, County Planning Development Director. The sale of property policy basically says that they can reduce the asking price based on future taxes to be paid. We've calculated that out to be, would be about $770 each. They're building a house, a new house on one side, valued, I think the permit was 181,000, so that one would pay that off, so they could offer, they could ask for their portion for a dollar of the vacated area. The concern is with the, and the reason it comes with building of grounds, if it does not meet the sale of property policy, the Bosnian cemetery side, since they do not pay property taxes, there would be no future property taxes generated off that. Therefore, the sale of property policy would say that they would have to offer the $770 amount, and they are offering $1.
Mr. Welber?
What?
Views?
Would you want to contribute?
It does not meet the sale of property guidelines.
Right.
So, generally, you're not in favor of anything that doesn't meet the guidelines?
Yep, that's correct.
But he doesn't vote.
But he doesn't vote.
At this stage.
Not at this, not at this point.
Not at this stage.
And, where, Noel, go. What was, what was staff's recommendation on this, then?
We're recommending the $770 amount for the Bosnian Cemetery, and the $1 amount for the house, since the house meets the sale of property policy.
Okay, but that's not what, how this is worded, right?
This is their request.
This is a request for the, by the Bosnian Cemetery. The other one would not have to come to you, since it meets the sale of property policy. I just wanted to explain the two sides.
So, you're saying, the, in, from your perspective, the $1 is not acceptable, and you're suggesting the 700 and how much?
770.
770?
Correct.
But they didn't offer that. So, how do we handle this item?
Recommend denial of the offer.
Yeah. Vote for, vote against this item if you don't want to go for the dollar.
For the dollar, and then they can bring it back and offer more.
If they offer the 740, Noel would not have to bring it to you, because it would meet the sale of property.
Sale of property. Okay, very good. Gentlemen?
So, we've got a motion.
So, we have a, a motion for the request by Marcus Pratt and the Bosnian Islamic Association to purchase a portion of Marigold Drive for a dollar. Those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. That item fails.
Motion adjourned.
Second. We have a motion, proper second, to adjourn. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Dance Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda is proposed, and also the...
Motion to approve the agenda is proposed, and also the minutes of October twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Madam Chairperson, I'd like to take those travel requests.
Thank you.
First, we have Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development for the two thousand fifteen Cedar Valley Coalition Trip to Washington DC, April twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, at a cost not to exceed eighteen hundred and thirty dollars. And also Rudy Jones, Community Development Director, to the same meeting from April twenty-third through the thirtieth, at a cost not to exceed sixteen hundred and ninety dollars. I move we approve both those items.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Those items pass. Pre-arr.
Madam Chairperson, I'd like to take those, please.
Thank you.
Okay, we have building maintenance, six thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars to install two new gates and gate guide shoes on a freight elevator at Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. Building maintenance, sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars to re-roof a, re-roof main roof area with sheeting, cap fascia with color-clad metal plus sheeting repair for Berns Pool. Building maintenance not to exceed ten thousand dollars for caulking of concrete sidewalks and expansion joints outside Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. Central garage, one thousand seven hundred dollars for vehicle maintenance, scanner, analyzer. Central garage, two thousand ten dollars to replenish stock hydraulic hose. City clerk, not to exceed three thousand dollars to remodel HR office to utilize two offices. Code enforcement, one thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-seven cents to on, for onboard communications annual contract service for three vehicles from November two thousand fourteen through October two thousand fifteen. Leisure services not to exceed four thousand four hundred dollars for additional lockers for men's club locker room at the Cedar Valley Sportsplex. Sewer, two thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents for four desk tower computers with four twenty-three inch monitors and accessories. Sewer, one thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars plus four hundred dollars shipping and handling for new incubator for lab. Sewer, two thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars for replacement to high-efficiency twin water softener for digester boiler water system. Street, not to exceed two thousand three hundred dollars for replacement and additional snow fence sanitation, two thousand three hundred fifty dollars for removal of hazardous tree per court order.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there discussion?
I had a question. Madam, Michelle, get something.
I got something. I just want to get a correction on there. Central garage, the two thousand ten for the stock hydraulic hose, I think that needs eighty-eight dollars and five cents of freight on there. We can just add that, please?
Thank you.
And Madam Chairperson, I just had a question on the leisure services lockers. That's not covered by any of our grants or endowments or anything? That's all general fund money? Is that what I'm seeing?
Correct. Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. This would be, we've expended the, the Winters Fund. The reason we're asking to do this is because we feel we're leaving revenue on the table. The lockers are all sold out. So this would be purchasing twenty-two lockers, and at two hundred and forty dollars a year, that'd be five thousand plus change in the first year. So they should pay for themselves within a year if we rent them, and we think we will rent them because we're full up now and a lot of requests.
All right, thank you.
So we think it'll cash flow.
Anything else, gentlemen? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Those items pass. I move that we approve the budget line item amendment. Copy is on file in Ms. Chair's office. And also that we pay the bills this week, which are two million one hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and seven dollars and eighty-eight cents, two comma one three two comma one zero seven point eight eight.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Those items pass.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, more adjourned. Thank you for your time.
Welcome to everybody that's in council chambers tonight. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council this Monday, November third. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Welber.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Very good. Thank you. Please join me in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer, please. Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance tonight is going to be led by Mr. Tom Lynn, one of our council members at Lodge. Mr. Lynn, please.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Or you may stand, as is the case in the back.
And Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the agenda as proposed. Also with the approval of the agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of October twenty-seventh.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda of the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. We have a couple of proclamations and a recognition to do tonight. Our first proclamation is to recognize National Radiologic Technology Week. So all of you that are here for that, Chris Messner, are you Chris?
Yeah.
Chris, and bring as many people as you want. Come on up.
All right. We should.
Come. Come down through the door and just come on up and, if you can just kind of gather up around me here, behind me, and we'll, we'll give you this. Come on up, guys and gals. Just, just kind of come around me here and file in and, file in and fill in. Hi, guys. Hi. Well, how are you? I was going to say, there must all be students, but I know you're not.
I am a student.
Are you really? All right. Chris, nice to see you.
Good luck.
There, thank you.
Thanks for having us.
You betcha. We are here to have a proclamation and to celebrate Radiologic Technology Week. This proclamation is, whereas maintaining top physical condition is an important goal shared by citizens, medical professionals and qualified practitioners specializing in the use of radiation and the treatment of disease. And whereas a safe radiological environment is made possible through the dedication and care of radiologic technologists, and whereas the contributions of these radiologic technologists, nuclear medicine technologists, diagnostic medical sonography technologists and radiation therapy technologists in our state are helping our citizens live longer, healthier lives. Whereas these contributions are the result of education, research and greater understanding. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of November third through the seventh, two thousand fourteen, as Radiologic Technology Week in Waterloo, and encourage all citizens to recognize this event and to participate in its observance. I'm going to give that to you, and I'm going to get a microphone, and you can say a couple of words. Excuse me here, guys. Thank you. There you go. And tell us a little bit about who you got here, too.
Well, with me tonight, I have students from our second-year senior class of, the, from our Rad Tech program at Covenant Medical Center. And tonight, May Lynn has offered to share a little bit about our profession and the week of National Rad Tech Week.
Perfect. May Lynn, hold it right up here. There you go. Thank you.
National Rad Tech Week is an annual event established by the American Society of Radiologic Technologists to celebrate the important role medical imaging and radiation therapy professionals play in patient care and healthcare safety. The week-long celebration highlights the radiologic technology profession and raises public awareness about radiologic technologists. The first National Radiologic Technology Week was held July twenty-second through the twenty-ninth in nineteen seventy-nine. The annual celebration was later moved to November to commemorate the anniversary of the X-rays discovery by Wilhelm Conrad Rankin on November eighth, eighteen ninety-five. The week-long celebration calls attention to the valuable work of radiologic technologists. The highly technical images acquired by these healthcare professionals play an integral role in the medical process and in the lives of patients, millions of patients, excuse me. Millions of images are acquired each and every day, however not necessarily by registered technologists. An RT is responsible for capturing images using ionizing radiation safely. They are also responsible for ensuring that the image that they help to acquire provides the interpreting radiologists and referring physicians with the information they need to make, confirm and exclude a diagnosis accurately. In order to be a registered technologist, one must graduate from an accredited radiography program, comply with ethical standards and pass a certification exam. Upon successful completion of these requirements, one may designate themselves as an ARRT, Registered Technologist, and use the initials RT after their names. Each facility decides how they choose to celebrate National Rad Tech Week. Some professionals choose to highlight each individual technologist in their local newspaper. Others choose to raise awareness of proper education requirements for the profession. Another option would be to set up information booths containing examples of X-rays that may be acquired during specific examinations. Hospitals also have the option of discussing the amount of exams held at their facilities each year, as well as the types of exams and equipment used there as well.
Very good. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, May Lynn. I also want to recognize two of our instructors that are here with us tonight, Ken and Mary, who will both be retiring in the next year, so they might not be back next year, but they've definitely supported National Rad Tech Week for many years, and we appreciate their years of service. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all very much. Thank you, guys, for what you're doing and studying for, too. It's very important. So watch the cord, and thank you, guys. Be good. And who else ever is, is with you? Please, come on up. Am I saying that right? Is it Jordan? Okay. Amy, nice to see you. Thank you. Good, good. We are here with Amy to proclaim pancreatic cancer awareness month. We have two hospital groups tonight. That's, you probably work together doing some of this stuff.
Not for the hospital group.
Well, it's not. No, it's true. That's true. Medical. There you go. Okay. This is a City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas, in two thousand fourteen, it is estimated that forty-six thousand four hundred and twenty Americans will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, with thirty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety of those patients dying from the disease, of which approximately four hundred and ten of those deaths are Iowans. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by two thousand twenty. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just six percent. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late-stage, and seventy-three percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while ninety-four percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act was signed into law in two thousand thirteen, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop, excuse me, the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Waterloo and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Waterloo support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease, and are committed to nothing less than a cure. And whereas the good health and well-being of Waterloo's residents are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and the research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim in Waterloo, Iowa, the month of November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. I'm going to give that to you, and I will give you a microphone. Maybe you can say a little bit about it also. There you go. Thanks.
Thank you. I got involved with pancreatic cancer after my mom was diagnosed and passed away quickly. She had thirteen days from her diagnosis to her death. And my very first thing I ever did was went to, I went to DC for the advocacy day there, and came back and became involved in a local organization. And our goal is to raise awareness and raise the survival rate from six percent and double that by the year two thousand twenty.
Wow.
And I'll let Melissa talk in just a minute, too.
My name's Melissa Giver. I got involved with the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network in the fight against pancreatic cancer when my dad was diagnosed two and a half years ago. My dad is a two and a half year survivor. When he was diagnosed, he was given a twenty percent survival rate for five years. So unfortunately, for early stages, it's still only a, about a twenty percent survival rate of five years.
Wow. All right, ladies, thank you so much for, for what you do and your advocacy, and God bless you for what you're going through and have been, and have gone through. So anything that we can do to help, thank you. Thank you very much, guys. You bet. And, this is fun. We're going to recognize Alan Mills, better known as Doc. Doc, stand up for me, would you please? As our November Team Member of the Month, and again, for council, particularly, and those of you that come to the council meetings on a regular basis, you know that we do this once a month. Doc works in our street department, and I usually say that in these presentations, that you don't really have to be a hero, you don't have to step in front of a speeding train or jump tall buildings. You, a lot of times, just have to show up and do a good job and, and be a positive influence on your coworkers and so forth. But this happens to be a case where Doc did really something pretty outstanding and extraordinary. Doc was, happens to be driving a street sweeper. This was in, what, late September, early October, Doc, something like that, going across one of our bridges and saw a lady standing out in the water. And just, obviously, realized that that didn't look right. She didn't have a fishing pole in her hand, she didn't look like she was supposed to be there. So Doc stopped, got out, and from the shore started talking to this lady and, and trying to get her out of the water. She was obviously disturbed and distressed, and she just started walking further down the river and getting in deep water. And Doc just continued to talk to this lady, and eventually was able to talk her out of the water, get emergency personnel there. Doc says, I don't know what happened to her after that, but we can be fairly well assured that if you hadn't have shown up and wouldn't have seen her and taken the actions that you did, things would not have been as good as they turned out. So Doc, God bless you for what you're doing. Thank you for, well, working for the City of Waterloo. And I always give this little caveat to Doc and your wife and to you ladies, you're welcome to stay and listen to the entire council meeting, get a little civics lesson here, but you don't have to, and nobody will be offended if you choose not to. So now would be a good time, if you want to leave, to just go ahead and, and leave. So, that's good. Thank you, guys, though. You bet. What is beep? Thanks, Doc.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. When I, when I recognized Doc at, at the meeting, I, I kind of recognized him, and I said, you know, I wondered how many people had driven by and seen this lady. And he says, oh, he says, he says, probably couldn't see her.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is motion received and filed through publication notice of public hearing, and that's a request of Iowa Development Enterprises to vacate fifteen-foot-wide platted utility easement along the south property line of Lot One Summerland Farms.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to item number two?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number two on tonight's agenda? Just give us your name and address, please, sir.
Hi, Kyle Helen, Helen Engineering, two-two-eight Alvarado, Cedar Falls, Iowa. Just wanted to make a couple of comments. This is regarding the replat of Lot One Summerland Farms. A new easement is already in place. Mid-America has already removed the electrical line from the easement and relocated it to the new one. This is just a formality to finalize this so we can get the replat of Summerland addition recorded and some of those units sold and people occupying them.
Okay. And if I—I believe there was a request that, if at all possible, to suspend the rules and pass this tonight so that you can get these—
Yes, if at all possible, that's the one thing that's holding up the recording of the final plat is the easement. So if we could waive and suspend those rules, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll see how that goes. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion and close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That—that's the utility and drainage easement. Do they need the—did they replace the drainage easements with a storm sewer or something?
No. All right, Eric.
I mean, having that water problems out there?
There is no Anderson Community Planning Development Director. There's an eight-inch sanitary sewer located next to the site that'll still be in the easement area. There's no storm sewer located adjacent to the site. It was drained through a ditch-drained system, so there was no reason to have the drainage easement retained.
Thanks. Anything further?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion received, filed, consider and passed for the first time in ordinance vacating fifteen-foot-wide platted utility easement along the south property line of Lot One Summerland Farms.
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Next three, please. Six, seven, and eight. Mr. Hart?
Move to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to KWS Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of $46,855 and approving contract bonds and certificates of insurance for the Fletcher Avenue and University Avenue traffic safety improvements and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those three? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Mr. Helen, there you go. Thank you, sir. Resolutions, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
Would you like to create a—
First three, please. Yes, please. I'm sorry.
Three, I move we adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Murphy Tractor of Waterloo, Iowa, for the rental of three motor graders to support snow removal operations. Four is a resolution approving award of bid to Community Motors Company, Inc. of Cedar Falls in the amount of $57,064 for the purchase of two Chevy Colorado Compact pickups. Five is a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance with KWS, Inc. of Cedar Falls in the amount of $37,400 for the Amesboro Avenue and Downing Avenue traffic safety improvements and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those three? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Next three, please. Six, seven, and eight. Mr. Hart?
Move to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to KWS, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of $46,855 and approving contract bonds and certificates of insurance for the Fletcher Avenue and University Avenue traffic safety improvements and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And seven, I move to adopt a resolution approving City of Waterloo to name a portion of a private street, Rapid Square, generally located south of 200 Ridgeway Avenue. And number eight, I move to adopt a resolution approving early occupancy agreement between American Pattern Storage, LLC, and the City of Waterloo for the use of the former Food Bank Building, generally located at the southeast corner of East Eleventh Street and Sycamore Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign said documents.
Second. Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding any of those three? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number twelve, please.
Mr. Sir.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number twelve is a motion instruct the community development director to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and that's for the request for proposal for well-plugging, demolition, and site clearance services for the former Rath Packing Company, Wellhouse, located in the sixteen-hundred block of Sycamore Street.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, receive, file plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution and preliminarily approving plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. We had a very short agenda. It's time for oral comments, and I have two people that have signed up and called in ahead of time. I have Forrest Dilavu for five minutes and Mr. Ron Wood for five minutes. I don't care who is first. Forrest, you're on my list first, maybe just out of the old alphabetizing of last name. I'm not sure, but there you go.
Depends on which list it is. Okay. My name is Forrest Dilavu, Seventy-two-five Huntington Road. I would like to address the footing drains that need to be repaired in my neighborhood and the other neighborhood. Got a few statements and a bunch of questions. I get questioned every day on the street. They say, "Forrest, you're there, you listen, you ask questions, maybe you know." And I do the best I can to say exactly what's been said here. My first one is, this area is referred to as Bermuda Triangle over there, and I think I know why. If the footing drains in the areas brings us into compliance with the EPA, the program could change. In other words, if the EPA says, "Hey, you're doing good, you're fine," we could then possibly stop or slow down the process after that first two years. And so then, we would be the only ones paying. If the rest of them got pulled out of the program, didn't have to do it, we would be the only ones paying. So that's why I feel that the city should and could pay for the whole amount. Part of my thoughts. Then some of the questions are, can—if there's been people here saying, "I don't even need that line. It just goes in there, it never does any water." Is the city going to allow those folks to just plug the line? You know, in whatever fashion the building department determines? Cut it, cement it, take out a foot of pipe, whatever it is? And then, we all know that if there was a problem, the walls could cave in, but those folks maybe choose to do that rather than spend thousands of dollars. Okay? And can the water be pumped clear out to the street? In other words, can you roll a pipe out there? Can you roll a hose out there and pump it over the curb and into the—into the storm sewer? And a second version of the first question is, the fifty dollars a month, fine, fee, or whatever you choose to deem it, at the end of these two years, those folks who have not gotten that done will be paying this fifty dollars, while their neighbors, maybe just a block away, are pumping water in, letting water run in. They're doing the same thing that these folks are doing, but they're not paying the fifty dollars. So to me, that's enforcing the law or the ordinance unjustly. In other words, you folks got to, those folks don't. And it just—it just doesn't seem fair. And how will complaints be—a lady asked this last week, I believe, "How will the complaints be handled about this water being pumped out? I pump it out my window, it runs across my driveway and in my neighbor's basement. Who's going to be responsible for that? You know, I'm told I've got to get it out, and I've got to pump it out. So where does it go and what happens, you know? And who will tell us where we have to pump it out of our house? Does it go out the front? Does it go out the window? Does it pipe into the downspouts? You know, where does it go? Front yard, backyard? I had one elderly couple call me and said, "Forrest, there ain't no way. I want to pipe this all the way to my backyard, my basement's finished, I can see thousands of dollars."
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Item number twelve, please.
Mr. Smith? Item number twelve is a motion instruct community development director to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and as for the request for proposal for well-plugging demolition and site clearance services for the former raft packing company Wellhouse located in the sixteen-hundred block of Sycamore Street.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution and preliminarily approving plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. So roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution setting the date of bid opening as November twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, and hearing as November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, instruct city clerk to publish notice of specifications, bid document, et cetera, and taking bids.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. We have a very short agenda. It's time for oral comments, and I have two people that have signed up and called in ahead of time. I have Forrest Dilavu for five minutes and Mr. Ron Wood for five minutes. I don't care who is first. Forrest, you're on my list first, maybe just out of the old alphabetizing of last name. I'm not sure, but there you go.
Depends on which list it is. Okay. My name is Forrest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I would like to address the footing drains that need to be repaired in my neighborhood and the other neighborhood. Got a few statements and a bunch of questions. I get questioned every day on the street. They say, Forrest, you're there, you listen, you ask questions, maybe you know. And I do the best I can to say exactly what's been said here. My first one is, this area is referred to as Bermuda Triangle over there, and I think I know why. If the footing drains in the areas brings us into compliance with the EPA, the program could change. In other words, if the EPA says, hey, you're doing good, you're fine, we could then possibly stop or slow down the process after that first two years. And so then, we would be the only ones paying. If the rest of them got pulled out of the program, didn't have to do it, we would be the only ones paying. So that's why I feel that the city should and could pay for the whole amount. Part of my thoughts. Then some of the questions are, can, if, there's been people here saying, I don't even need that line. It just goes in there, it never does any water. Is the city going to allow those folks to just plug the line? You know, in whatever fashion the building department determines, cut it, cement it, take out a foot of pipe, whatever it is, and then, we all know that if there was a problem, the walls could cave in, but those folks maybe choose to do that rather than spend thousands of dollars. Okay, and can the water be pumped clear out to the street? In other words, can you roll a pipe out there? Can you roll a hose out there and pump it over the curb and into the, into the storm sewer? And a second version of the, of the first question is the fifty dollars a month, fine, fee, or whatever you choose to deem it, at the end of these two years, those folks who have not gotten that done will be paying this fifty dollars while their neighbors, maybe just a block away, are pumping water in, letting water run in. They're doing the same thing that these folks are doing, but they're not paying the fifty dollars. So to me, that's enforcing the law or the ordinance unjustly. In other words, you folks got to, those folks don't. And it just, it just doesn't seem fair. And how will complaints be, a lady asked this last week, I believe, how will the complaints be handled about this water being pumped out? I pump it out my window, it runs across my driveway and in my neighbor's basement. Who's going to be responsible for that? You know, I'm told I've got to get it out and I've got to pump it out. So where does it go and what happens, you know? And who will tell us where we have to pump it out of our house? Does it go out the front? Does it go out the window? Does it pipe into the downspouts? You know, where, where does it go? Front yard, backyard? I had one elderly couple call me and said, Forrest, there ain't no way I want to pipe this all the way to my backyard. My basement's finished. I can see thousands of dollars. The first question he asked is, how soon is it going to hit my neighborhood so I can get out of Waterloo? I don't like hearing that. This is a wonderful couple. He said, if I can pump it out the front, I may be all right. I wouldn't have to tear up my finished part of the basement. And obviously, that wouldn't look very good, and to sell the house, it would probably depreciate the value with the black hose running out the street. And if, if someone decides that they want to plumb it into the storm sewer, will the city be breaking open the storm sewer and bringing it to the property line, and then the resident take it out to the property line and dump it into the storm sewer? Or is the resident going to have to pay to, whatever it takes, cut the street, cut the curb, you know, the ones that want to plumb it in and make it look nice and neat and tidy? Okay, and you mentioned you were going to have some meetings to tweak this ordinance. Will these be public? Will the people in the Bermuda Triangle be invited? And what you did tonight with the restaurant owners was fabulous. That was wonderful. I haven't seen that in years. Very rare to, for anything like that to happen, but it needs to happen more.
I'll just stop you right there on that one, because I can answer that one. Some of these I can't, Forrest. There will be meetings on the twelfth and on the twenty-fifth of November, and there will be lots of publications on this, I believe at five-thirty, is that right, Craig? Five o'clock at the, at the library.
Is that my five or is that two?
No, it's your five.
Okay, I've got a couple more. Do the mayor and council, any of you have to have yours fixed? What plumbing companies are, have been involved in the process? And who's going to certify whether we need it done or not? Is it plumbers, city inspectors, homeowners, whoever?
You know, Forrest, those, obviously, you've got several really good questions there.
Yeah, and I'll leave you a copy.
If, leave me a copy, and, and we'll try to get, not try, the best I can, we'll get all of those answered. But again, there's, there will be public meetings held, as Craig said, as I said, on the fifth and then the twelfth, excuse me, the twelfth and the twenty-fifth at five o'clock at the public library. And, and we'll stay there as long as it takes to get everybody's questions answered.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ron Woods, please.
Good evening. My name is Ron Wood, and I am representing the Waterloo Commission on Human Rights as the chair. These represent seven-ninths of our, our commission. First and foremost, I would like to read our mission statement so that the members of the council, as well as Waterloo citizens, understand our mission. Excuse me. The Waterloo Commission on Human Rights mission is to protect and to promote the personal dignity of all Waterloo citizens and eliminate any discriminatory barriers that prevent them from reaching their full production capacities. We seek to make compliance and education a meaningful and visible strategy as we work toward the elimination of, of the effects of discriminatory, discriminatory practices in the City of Waterloo. In support of this mission, we are committed, first, to maintain a well-trained, culturally-sensitive staff and commission to provide for execution and enforcement of the responsibilities set forth in the City of Waterloo Commission on Human Rights Ordinance number four-zero-six-four. Number two, to ensure freedom from discrimination by assisting in the preservation of the public safety, health, and general welfare of individual citizens within the City of Waterloo. Number three, to increase the sensitivity of all citizens in Waterloo of the effects and cost of discrimination by sponsoring workshops, conferences, training sessions, community forums, et cetera. And to be accessible to the community by actively participating in agency networking and to collaborate with agencies, those missions are similar to ours. And finally, to provide for the execution within the City of Waterloo of the policies embodied in the Iowa Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five and in the Federal Civil Rights Act, and to promote cooperation between the City of Waterloo and the state and federal agencies enforcing those acts. We, the Human Rights Commission, come tonight because we have a concern about a particular police action that we know, if unchecked, will certainly erode trust and confidence in our system of community policing. We understand that the police have a very difficult and often dangerous job, but their privilege to serve and their charge to keep should reflect an abiding commitment to serve and protect all the citizens of Waterloo in an ethical, ethical, responsible manner. We, the commission, are greatly disturbed by the actions of one particular police officer who we believe inappropriately applied the charge of harassment interference with official acts to a young citizen during the month of September, two thousand and fourteen. Chief Treckla has explained to the Human Rights Commission what constitutes interference. But the situation which occurred recently in which a young adolescent female who is walking with a group of youngsters ages two to fifteen and ultimately charged with harassment interference needs to be reexamined. In this situation, the officer drove the police car by a group of children, and the subject adolescents explained, slow down. She was actually escorting the group of young, younger, or, excuse me, of smaller children across the street. The officer proceeded to stop, turn around, and go back to the youth. Words were exchanged. The adolescent asked what she did wrong and asked for her mother. The ask, the officer asked for her name, and the adolescent gave the officer her first name. The officer reached out to touch, grabbed the adolescent, and she pulled away. At this point, the officer ran after the adolescent, excuse me, adolescents, and used force to put this young female to the ground, handcuff her, and arrest her. We do have a copy of the verbal communication of interest that was captured by the police officer's dash cam and provided to us by Chief Treckla. We also have a copy of the internal investigation report conducted by Lieutenant Al Carrier, Administrative Division, Internal Affairs. We do not agree with the findings of the investigative report. The commission feels that this interference of public acts or interference of official acts is used far too often and too liberally applied when other positive measures could be enacted. With respect to this police officer's action, while the strict letter of the law may not be in dispute, the spirit of the law is, in this case, officers do have a lot of discretion. And the larger question, as we represent of the larger community, is whether these actions are wise and work to promote the common good and vibrant and elite diverse community. Are these actions reflective of due process and reflect respectful of this young adolescent's human civil rights? Additionally, one, does this simple statement such as slowdown by which, and by the way, wasn't yelled or screamed, but roshus in our view, create such a dangerous situation that it would ultimately require an officer three times the adolescent's age and size to forcibly arrest this adolescent who was looking for the safety of younger children in her company? Why couldn't this incident have been treated as a teachable moment? What would have been wrong with being a little more courteous and informing the children than a distracting remark? Can I continue?
Finish it.
Could possibly distract someone and create an accident if that's the angle the officer chose to pursue. We believe that, believe this approach could have created an environment of mutual trust and respect with the officer and the children. Instead, however, the approach that the officer chose created a very tense situation full of strife, anger, distrust, and fear that could irreparably damage his adolescent family and friends in the absence of appropriate and timely interventions. What happened to freedom of speech? We never heard Miranda rights offered. Why won't the police let the mother be called and be present? And also, the mother has stated that this was not the same version of the tape she saw. Is there a reason as to why the tape was altered? Are you content to allow this to just be another young person labeled as a problematic and left to struggle in a society that has already has a preconceived notion of those troublemakers are, i.e. the young, the poor, the brown, and the black? Does this young child have to now live a civic death, as many youth counselors now describe the phenomenal, as a result of his charge, which is now on the child's records? We believe that the widening, the gap between the police and the general public through poor and/or irresponsible decision makings, as exemplified in this example we share with you tonight, is not healthy for our city. While we have an encouraging discussions with Director Treckla, and now we can say we've had a promising discussion with Mayor Clark, we strongly encourage mayor and the city council to, first, offer a formal apology to this child and mother, acknowledge that an abuse of power was exercised in this particular incident. And, number two, work in concert with all responsible parties immediately to discuss and, and completely remove this charge of harassment interference of official acts or any charge related to this, or any charge related to this charge from the adolescent's record. We do not want this capricious application of harassment interference of official acts to start some delusions of problems for this child that has plagued her during her development and later years of life. Finally, we, the commission, will continue to engage in a positive dialogue with Chief Treckla to help establish procedures and practices to protect the human and civil rights of our Waterloo citizens. We seek to assist the police department through specific racial literacy training and other diversity training, for example, training which deals with proactive engagement with younger members of our community. We seek to work with you educators and practitioners to ensure that the training be not only by annual or quarterly occurrence, but it should be a vital component of institutionalized curriculum at the law enforcement academy. Our communities are diverse and continually changing, and cultural competency and racial literacy, diversion inclusion are not a luxury but an absolute necessity if we are to expect, excuse me, to build a civil society together. Clearly, the commission serves notice today that we will, we are and will be vigilant and assertive in dealing with any human and civil rights issues we believe to violate personal dignity and the worth of our community, of our community neighbors like this adolescent who is a subject of our conversation tonight. We also strive to protect the city and strengthen relationship between the city and the community via proactive education and outreach when and wherever possible, as we are doing tonight in this forum. Thank you for the privilege of your time. Way over. We welcome to a work session inclusive of the mayor and his appointees to help us readdress this particular incident as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Clark?
Yes, sir.
You probably shouldn't have that there. It really makes me person nervous.
You're the first person that's ever said that.
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch. I was reading an article last week, thank you, I'm doing, last week in the paper that Colorado lost and we won. And we got a lot more work to do, and he's a good man.
Thanks, Jim.
I'm Dwayne Ayers. I live on Bishop Street. My concern is the property on the corner of Eighteenth and Black Hawk Street, which I am the mortgage holder. I've asked the city to issue violations to the property owner and the property renter, which is Jennifer Tomka. She's had yard sales, flea markets closing out sales, there's trash and junk all over the property. I've gone to the city inspectors or the city enforcers, and they said, well, we'll think about it. We'll check into it, maybe next week. And I talked to Barry twice, three times, nothing's done. I went to the mayor, and he said it may involve further police action. I went to the Waterloo Police Department. Jeff Tyler, the investigator, he said there's no further investigation on the property. There's seventeen junk vehicles on the property, only two are licensed. There's trash, furniture, junk, every place. I've asked the city and code enforcement to issue that lady tickets or violations. Nothing is done, and they selectively decide who they want to issue tickets. Two days before that, I got a call on my fence in my personal yard. I wasn't even done. I had a city permit to put it up. Wasn't even finished. They issued me a ticket, it was in violation. I thought I had time to get it done. I don't know what's happening. I think I'm within the, in the proper code of what the fence is, but they selectively issue tickets to whoever they want to. And the lady on, that runs the business, owns the business on Eighteenth Street, has been there every other day. She was living in a camper there for a while. I said, how come she doesn't get a ticket or forced to move off of there? We'll check into it. We'll check into it. We'll check in. That went, went on for three weeks, and then I went to the mayor, talked to him. There's still nothing done. The place is trashed out. I mean, there's junk all over. There are seventeen vehicles. There only two was licensed when I was there and looked at all of them. I want to know why the city does not enforce their own laws when they go to me, and I got a license putting my fence up, and they give me a ticket. I ain't even done with putting it up. Thank you.
Mr. Ayers, you weren't given a ticket for your fence, you were given a notice, but you.
Given a notice. Why am I given a notice? I was within my time.
Okay, let me, let me talk just a second, okay? We, if you want us to enforce our code enforcement rules on that property, I'll get them out there tomorrow. You are the deed holder for that. You have sold that on contract to the troncas. If we enforce that, if we write tickets, which I'll be glad to start that action tomorrow, and they don't clean it up, you're the next person in line. We're, we're not going to clean that stuff up for you. It's, it's still your property. You are the deed holder for that property, and because you sold it on contract, doesn't relieve you of the responsibility of keeping that property clean.
I hate to disagree with you. I've talked to my lawyer on that.
You'll be the first one to never get.
Until we take the property back, fully take the property back, we're not responsible for what's on that property.
Okay.
I'm just the bank, that's all.
Well, I tell you what, we'll, we'll start the process. I, I, I think you're wrong, but we'll see, and I'll be glad to start the process, and we'll, and we'll get the notice filed, and, and we'll move forward with that. I think inevitably, you're going to be end up responsible for cleaning that up yourself. But I'll be.
Well, I hope so when, when it's done.
I'll be glad to do it.
I hope I clean it up, and you give me two months to clean it up like you did this, the property owners now.
Okay, I'll, we'll get the process started. I've always been pretty good with you, Mr. Ayers. I've always called you back, and I've, you know, we've worked together. We can work together on this one.
Well, I came to you to solve the problem, and it's not solved.
Okay.
And, and it's not, nothing's done to it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
David Dyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. About three weeks ago, I asked about, a little over three weeks ago, I asked about, because I take my, my leaves and grass down, my branches down to the recycle area, I asked a meeting about, you know, was something going to get done about this? And I was assured that they were having a private contractor come in there. Well, on the twenty-seventh, at three-thirty in the afternoon, I was down there disposing of some stuff, and there's a grinder sitting there. Three-thirty in the afternoon, nobody's operating it, and nothing was done, small amount of work. On the twenty-ninth, I had the occasion to be down there again, and at two P.M., and the grinder was there again, not operating, and nothing more done than what was done when I was down there on the twenty-seventh. So before the council meeting day, I went down there, and the grinder's gone. And there's not much more, if any, done than what I saw on the twenty-ninth. Is something happening? Three weeks or better ago, I asked about it, the grinder appeared, and, and understood from, from the guy that operates the site that it was a subcontractor. Has he bailed out on us, or, you know, what's going on?
Mr. Dyer, I, I'll be glad to answer that question. Probably more people are thinking about it than just you. And you could have saved yourself a trip down and called me, and I'd have been glad to tell you, but the, the grinder worked for two days, I think, two, maybe three, got quite a bit moved back.
Yeah.
There was a hydraulic, there was a hydraulic leak, about ten o'clock one day, eleven o'clock in the morning, leaked down onto the manifold, and the thing caught on fire. We were lucky nobody got hurt, but the, the apparatus burned up. That's why you saw it sitting there, nobody operating. There was a fire. We had the fire department down there, they put it out. They have now taken that apparatus off, got it, they're going to get it fixed. But it's not, it's not collusion, it's not us lying to you. The thing caught on fire, and not much you could do about that. And when it gets fixed, we'll have it back and they'll finish the contract.
Okay, well, I, I guess the other burr under my saddle, if you want to say it that way, is this gone on for months before you finally got somebody down there? That pile didn't get that big in a couple of days.
Okay.
The guy that's down there taking, trying to take care of it, can't even push the stuff high enough. When he dumps his bucket, it comes right back down in front of him.
Okay.
Okay, one other item, quickly. The tech works wants money, and I've gone by there for several different council meetings